At this time, please stand for the place of ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
How about we get your prayer, please?
Our head, Father, and Lord, we thank you for the wonderful day that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity that you've allowed us to get up every morning, to come to work, to move in the directions that we all move in. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to be here. Lord, we ask that you'll be with this council tonight. We ask that you'll watch over this meeting. You'll give everybody understanding, clarity. We ask that you give the council the wisdom and the knowledge to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the community. We ask all of this of your sons and that of me.
Before we get started, I want to congratulate the five village teams that represent Town Tassel and Tassel Old League in their efforts in the state tournaments. It's very honored to have been involved in that organization, but also knowing that with my son being a church, that he'll eventually get some of those kids on the varsity level. But it is great to have small kids and coaches and community to represent Town and Tassel and different places and see their uniform says "Tassel" in DC and Fort Smith and more people. It's a win-win situation for us and we congratulate them and hope the best that they foresee. This time, we have a special presentation. We have Mike Tank with the Charter Communications. If you come forward, let's state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Mike Tank and with Charter Communications, I'm the Director of Government Relations. Our franchise with the city expired at the beginning of June, and so I've been working with the city manager and we've been looking at doing an extension of the existing agreement. There is a document that the manager and I have exchanged and reviewed. I met with him about a month ago to go through the points of it. I think the attorneys had a chance to review it, and so I'm here to hopefully ask your approval so we can extend it. What the document really does, it takes the existing agreement that's been in place for about 10 years now and extends it for another 10 years. There are a few modifications to it, but it's really just cleanup work. Change is the name because you know about a year, year and a half ago, Time Warner Cable merged with Charter Communications. So some of it's just cleaning up of the language from Time Warner Cable to Charter. Really, there's no substantial changes. I think the manager would agree to that, and so I'm here to ask your vote to approve that franchise extension, and it really is just an extension of the existing agreement. Happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Do you want to have it?
I've got one, something that I would like to say to you.
Sure.
I think you are taking advantage of people in this area because you have the only community, you have the only cable company in this area. Your company is charging these people in this area the same thing that you charge in any other area, yet we don't have the services that you have in the other areas. We pay the same price and higher prices, but we have to use Motorola boxes and stuff in our homes because your channels are not the channels that they need to go into the new boxes. I called your company two months ago, and as I had with Time Warner over, I said, "I'd like to talk about my bill and see what we can do to negotiate it down." She said, "Well, you won't take off?" I said, "I didn't really want to take anything off." I said, "I just want to see what we could do." She said, "You've used up all the things that you can have, and this is the way it is." And I thought that was the most astounding thing I'd ever heard. "This is the way it is." I would never tell anyone my customers that. I also had problems with my communications. I called, the girl says, "Sir, there'll be a man there to your house tomorrow with the new boxes." I said, "You mean the new used box?" She said, "No, sir, sir, we only have new boxes." But when he came to my house, he had the new used box, and I just don't think that's right. I do not think it's right that the people in this area are paying the same thing, but because you don't have the digital channels to carry the new boxes and give us the service that we should have, yet we pay the same thing. That's all I will have to say.
Excuse me, I have a froggy voice here. You are correct. We do reuse equipment. We do test it. We check it. If it's failed, we go out and get it refurbished. We do that everywhere in all of our systems. It's not only here, and it was done that way under Time Warner Cable. I'm a former Time Warner Cable employee. I worked for them for 10, 15 years. So that is standard throughout the entire industry. It's not only in Time Warner Cable, it's the entire industry, whether you talk with Comcast or in the other cable companies, BDU, whoever, they all do the same process. Charter has taken a little different approach than what Time Warner Cable had in the past. Time Warner Cable had a lot, a lot of discount packages out there. Charter has moved forward trying to say, "We want to move away from the discount packages and get to much more of a standardized, less discounted packages so you get what you sign up for." It's not just trying to find the latest deal. I hate to make it sound like a car dealership, but I think we're trying to go more, "Here's the pricing," and not have to go through the entire negotiations of a car dealership. We're moving in that direction. I'm very sorry that the way it was portrayed to you sounded like we didn't care and it's to take it or leave it, but we are moving in that direction so it isn't much more standardized pricing. We are also looking at the pricing because we do hear the expense. The vast majority of the expense that we incur is programming costs, and so some of the programming costs that we're doing now is trying to make smaller packages. And we were talking about this with the councilman as part of the meeting. One of the most expensive programming packages we have is sports, so we're trying to separate some of this sports programming cost so that if you're a sports fan and you want to incur those costs, you have that choice. If you're not a sports fan, you're not necessarily going to have to bear that price where you had to in the past. So there are changes in the way that the pricing is being done, there is changes in the way that the service is being done, but we do believe we are providing a good service, and we are providing internet service, digital broadcast, and digital video programming.
Well, you have, I would say that you have the expense, because I pay now, I don't mind telling you, $268 a month. Last year, it was $200. In first of the year and any year, gone up that much money. But the other companies now, cable, TV, or all these companies, they don't have them high prices, at least for a year.
Legal question, okay. Does this prevent, is this an exclusive franchise?
No.
Just 10 years?
It's not exclusive.
Okay, three years?
What's the difference? They're the only one in the area.
But somebody else can come in here.
Well, it's not exclusive, right?
If somebody else comes in, they can definitely.
They still have to go through the same process under the code in terms of request their franchise and public hearing, go through the whole.
The only thing I have a problem with.
That's probably she who do that.
When you're watching, what gets me, when you're watching me, good sports, and all of a sudden, it goes blank, like a Super Bowl. All of a sudden, it just, it goes away, and you have all the, it shuts down, and here you are. Well, what are we gonna do now?
What are we gonna do now, baby?
I'd like to have a good signal, and Ross, you know, like.
That's the way it's been all, all the years. I can remember one year, the hype was great for the Super Bowl, and an hour of Ford Super Bowl came out, the cable went out.
I'm very sympathetic to that, and to be honest with you, for a big event, Super Bowl, we do staff up extra technicians available just to be on the stage side. To say that a little bit of Murphy's Law doesn't kick in, it does, but we have made quite a few improvements to our cable system. We have gone all digital. We have gone very fiber-rich. In the past, we used to just go node, excuse me, trunk amp to line standard. Now we've gone fiber to the node with a more limited cascade of amplifiers, which gives a higher quality picture. We have gone all digital to make a better quality picture than an analog picture. We have two-way, we have the boxes with video on demand. We are providing quite a few higher level service. We have our engineers who have certain parameters that they have to meet and look at the signal level quality, not just sit down on a TV set and say, "Oh, that picture looks good, so it's subjective." There are physical number measurements that they go out and they have to meet and that are reported back to our Director of Engineering, and they look at those. I talk with them all the time about these type of things.
Do you have the same agreement with the county?
It's very, very similar. Is it exact word for word? No, it's not, but it's very similar, yes.
And why is one of the term of that franchise?
I'm in the process of talking with county manager. There's expires at the end of this month, so you guys are on the same cycle.
I have a question. I'm wondering why we do not have ABC Network in high definition in this system?
I cannot answer that question, but I'll be happy to look into it and get back with you.
That's the same answer I get when I call customer service.
It doesn't make any sense. If you can make 10 HD channels, why can't you make them all HD?
To be honest with you, I'll look into it and get back with you.
Because you're antiquated, you're way behind the times.
Yeah, I wouldn't go there, but what I'm gonna do is give you my card, so you can make sure I follow, I do follow up to it. Actually, let me get you a. I'll grab it, okay.
So what's the difference, like in DirecTV or the other, the other one, Dish can be all HD, how come you guys can only have 10 channels HD?
We have far, 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 far more than 10 channels HD.
Okay, let's say 12.
Let's say 200.
Not here, you don't.
Not here?
No, we don't. How many?
Somebody said 7.
Yeah, you can not have 200 HD channels.
Mine's like, we don't have.
I think that's what Jack's telling me.
That's what I'm talking about.
We don't have the same.
We have in this area, you have so many analog channels.
It's the 700 numbers, and that's it. It's like 702 to 753, a little above that.
The only thing they can do to you is the old Motorola Motes because of the analog channels. I went to my son in Charlotte. He's got equipment that I've never seen before. He has the same company that I did.
I live in Charlotte, so I know what you're talking about.
Oh, it's not here.
But we can't do anything about it.
Those free marketing, you can get DirecTV.
Yeah. That's how you tell them, you tell them by just touching on them.
Any other questions?
Couple of points that I need to make, many folks. With regard to Mr. Grant, by terms of the town, there are several different changes that if you haven't had a chance to look through. The term of the franchise is staying the same. All they modify is it's going from 2007 to 2017 to 2017 to 2027. They are amending to remove the local payment box, which was available before. There is the change in name, of course, from Time Warner Cable with Charter Communications. The insurance, it's removing the language that requires them to cover the officers, boards, commissions, councils, elected officials, agents, and employees from the text, and it's just saying the franchise authority, which is the town of Tassel. So you all will no longer be required to be covered by their insurance coverage. Service to school buildings is changing where in before, with Time Warner, they were provided basic and extended basic as a free service. They're taking out expanded basic, doing the same thing with the government, with the town law, they're getting rid of expanded basic, which they had before they were obligated to provide. And they did change their notice that you have to give in case you want to have any complaints. They had the Richlands office, that now is in Charlotte, and so that's what's being amended. They're asking to be amended. And I have a.
What was your last one you had?
You had, there's no local office. The notice before was sent to Richlands Time Warner's office. Now it's got to be sent to Charlotte.
Okay, Richland office is still there.
It's still in state, yes. Okay, I wondered about that, that was someone in there, because the agreement had mixed it, but that's.
But you can't call the Richland office.
You can drive there.
Yeah, but you can't call.
Have you had any issue with regards, just for making these proposals to extend, that they're just voting the same night, or they require, say, "We've got to have a public hearing"?
I don't believe there's a public hearing requirement.
I've looked into, and I could be wrong on this, but since you're amending the existing franchise, you're not just renewing it, you're amending. State codes require, state codes, excuse me, requires there to be a public hearing, so I think we're gonna have, my recommendation to council, unless Mr. Tank provided their information, I'm glad to look at it, I think you're gonna have to have a public hearing.
When was our contract?
Expired to.
Last month.
Less than. If it had just been a renewal, because under the Telecommunications Act, the one that we're working under, 1934, the one that was amended in 1984, it talks about that you may not have to have a public hearing, or I got to say, any public notice with a renewal, but since you're asking that there be amendments, state code specifically requires it, so I don't think we can get around, I think we've got to advertise this two weeks and have a public hearing on it. And you may unfortunately hear some of the same comments, but I think we're gonna have to go, if you've got to have. I was looking here to see if there's anything else. A couple of things. One, also, the actual franchise agreement was with the group that was called Time Warner New York Cable LLC. I think this is probably a nomenclature error, because it's not with, it says here, "Time Warner Cable Southeast LLC currently holds a cable television franchise agreement," and that doesn't, because Time Warner Cable Southeast.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, and I think that's probably a nomenclature error, but that needs to be changed. It's referencing back also, the original franchise refers back to a code section in our state code that's been repealed, so that's gonna have to be changed as well. I think, again, this is probably just an oversight, but it is incorrect, it's gonna have to be switched out as well. But based on those amendments alone, if we're gonna have to have, I've got to recommend the council, we've got to have a public hearing to take care of that vote.
Understand.
I'm curious why, if you're here now, a month after, let's say, why weren't you here a few months ago?
I had talked with your town manager, looking at this, and whether we were bringing it tonight or we're pushing back another month or two, we were here to talk about these conversations. I'm asking rather, I was hoping that we would have these conversations prior to the meeting, so that we could have addressed these instead of, I was under the impression that these had somewhat been addressed and that we would probably be having a positive vote this evening.
And I understand, I understand. I could, I'll follow my sword for that, the two things that I had done, but when I, when I looked at, just when I looked back and looked through the code, I just don't think we had any ability.
And I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. We're willing to work with you to make sure everybody's comfortable with what's going forward. It gives you the opportunity to answer a few of the questions, so that the next time, I can answer those questions better than I did this evening, and we can certainly get that information. I mean, that's, we want to work with you, we want to have a good agreement that both sides are comfortable with, and we can provide that information.
What council can do, I'm not sure which way you're leaning if you're gonna vote tonight to renew it or.
I don't think, I think our attorney's telling them.
Let me get there. If you're wanting to renew it, I'm assuming that's the direction you're gonna go, maybe I'm wrong to assume, but we can leave it up to Brad and also Charter Media's attorney or representative here tonight to work out details, and we can proceed forward under Brad's satisfaction. That way, you don't have to hear it again another month from now. We have a public hearing, we can proceed forward. Brad will take care of language, we have the public hearing and move forward with it. If we don't go ahead, obviously, we're gonna have to, you know, start from scratch and bring it back before you go.
And I will say this much, and not into your defense, and I'm not trying to have anybody pile up on you, Mr. Tank, but under the Telecommunications, the Act, 1984 Act, it's pretty broad in what the franchise is granted, what they can do to protect themselves, and what the town can do to protect itself too, and its residents, but it is a fairly convoluted process. Once you've got the franchise in place, it is there, it's pretty liberal for them to be granted or renewed. I think you've got to notify the general public as to what's being changed and give them the opportunity to voice their concerns about it, because you do have options. You don't have to renew the franchise, but you need to understand also the implications. If you don't, then what steps can be taken, not only by the town, but also by Charter Communications to take it another step, to go to federal court, to see if that, whether or not the town's been reasonably denying franchise renewal. So there's things that you can consider and speak to me about in the next 30 days before you have a public hearing.
Is there any historical showing of an actual negotiation, or just every time they bring a new contract, we have to say yes or no? Can we negotiate? Like, taking expanded cable out of the schools, is that a negotiation, or is that just?
All the community negotiation, every bit of the community negotiation.
Because when you brought it to us, it said only a few minor changes and nothing greater, and when you substantiated, to me, that's not a minor, so it seemed like there's a pretty major changes in there that I would have liked to know about, so I think there's opportunities.
Since you have no office in our community, never have, to my knowledge, it's always been at Richlands, that drop-off box was something I think the community members really solved, so I don't know if you can just drop that. I mean, I guess you can, but our citizens, the residents of the community, do they want that? Do they use that box? I don't know.
Yes, they use it, I know that.
Did you get a question, parents?
We do, a lot of war painters go in there. When it comes, you know, for the convenience of the citizens, obviously, it's a plot, but I assure you, administratively, here, you won't hear anybody fussing through the roof, but it is.
If we have a cable office in this community, I would see no need for it, but we don't. No, if we want to quit, we've got to pick everything up and carry it to the end.
So you recommend, you said, a public hearing?
I think you have to. Again, there's nothing against, I think there's one more.
Provide.
Trying to provide here to you the information, like he's got what he has, but based on what I read, this is an amendment, it's not just a renewal, and even under the Communications Act, it's under 15.2, I think 2108, you've got to have a public hearing, you've got to amend it. I don't think we have a choice. I can, if you've got something you can provide to me, tell me otherwise, I'd love to see it. Everything I'm reading tells me you've got to have it, you have no choice.
So we can schedule a public hearing, mayor, all you need is a vote to direct the public hearings, Brad and Charter's attorney or representative here tonight, might can speak together, we'll work out the details of a public hearing, but you do need a motion to have a public hearing.
Right. You had it two weeks before.
It's got to be have a test twice, yeah. Code is specific about it.
And those costs will be returned to Charter meeting.
If they're awarded the franchise, yes, that's by statute as well, and that goes back to those costs.
We're saying, do you?
If you don't get the motion, you realize that the renewal is obviously being challenged.
Well, I don't see the sense in worrying about it because you don't have any other company anyhow. I mean, I don't know what put it off.
Well, you're required to give the public an opportunity to come in and voice their decision.
Voice their decision.
Because it is an amendment, it's not just a renewal, it's an amendment to the.
I'm raising the motion that we have a public hearing on the renewal.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second, any other discussion? And a public hearing will be at the next council meeting, which will be?
What?
Sometime August.
August 8th, okay.
That's time.
So.
We'll schedule it right now for 6:45, for right now, we've got the level back on here.
Okay, 6:45, okay. Okay, you have a motion to have a public hearing, Charter Communications, August 8th, 6:45. Any other discussion?
Great. Since we only have the new contract, can you send us to change the differences that you just spoke of to the council? Can you tell us to us?
If you've got, if you go through their franchise amendment or renewal agreement, all I've done is I've set the size in one paragraph. They're all there.
What you've got is you have the original, and then you have the amendment, but he also broke out.
I just want him to send me the bullet points of the changes.
I can do that, that's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not to talk for, but I'm prepared to say a motion carries.
Do we need a motion to allow him to negotiate this?
For me, I can, yeah, no, there's nothing me to negotiate.
They're gonna do it, they're gonna.
Okay.
One time, we get it right.
All right. Just make sure.
All right, thank you. Okay, next time, agenda, the representatives from the front of the table, and I think you get it, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Daphne Murray, and we are both representing Front to Table, which is scheduled for September 9th on Main Street, and we are here to request $1,000 for the musicians. Last year, we had three musicians at a cost of $1,250. There was $250 given to a group that played kind of in the appetizer portion before dinner started, then it was a jazz band that played during dinner, and another band after. Our understanding is that not many people stayed for the act of art, so what we have decided to do is to get the jazz band only and a cost of $1,000 rather than the $1,250. So it's actually a segment, we're paying them a little more than we did last year. It's Jody Trivitz Band at Southwest, and he explained to me, being a jazz band, that it does take, he'll have more people he'll need to hire, you know, for them to take breaks and such, so that the music can continue, and that's mainly why we're here.
How much does he want to?
We're wanting $1,000.
We gave 500 last year, right?
We gave 500 last year, but he did not play the entire time. He'll be responsible for about a three-hour period, 5:30 till about 8:30.
So I sent a request to Todd, it was sent to me from somebody on your committee two weeks ago?
Probably a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Requesting 500 from the council.
Yeah, I think the 500 was the original request from last year, when they thought they were gonna have multiple bands, and they re-looked at it and felt like just the one band, and because he was gonna be performing longer, he got 500 last year, but he's performing for much extended periods, so we can potentially negotiate that with him. I spoke with him today, though, and he felt pretty certain that he's gonna have to employ additional musicians because of the extended time. That was the reason for the extra money.
No, my son won't come for free, but he can for that.
You're wearing it up. You might as well.
They're good. The town is also paying your public works people.
Yeah, we got, every event that's on Main Street, we spend thousands, not eight thousand, thousands.
Thousands. We'll be spending thousands whether we give them the thousands or not.
Yes, we donate, we get public works employees, police department, for hours, clean up, yes, it's a lot of money involved, and it's all over time hours, it's not straight down hours. But it's a good event, it's kind of last year, it was awful.
It was, it was really good. Especially when I'm helping this year, because I enjoyed it so much last year, I made that statement, if you're looking at me helping, I'd love to see this again, so.
I don't understand, you said they were asking 500 when they thought they were gonna have two bands.
Three, three bands.
Well, we have three bands, last year we had three bands, we paid one 500, we paid two of them 500 each. We paid the first band 250 because they only played for a brief time.
So who else helped with the money last year?
I don't know, you, I wasn't on the committee.
Yeah, as far as I know, I know the town probably contributed, you know, most of the 500s and that.
So they already paid for 500 last year?
Uh, or was it 1,250? Well, I was looking, I was looking through the expenses last night, and I'm not sure whether, yeah, I'm not sure, you know, exactly where all the donations and things came from, but.
That's one thing we were trying to do at our meeting last night, we have the checkbook where things were paid, we're trying to match those records of where those funds came from. We knew that we. We knew that we came to the town for music last year, whether it was all of it or part of it, we weren't really sure.
So what's the, do you know what your overhead is for the event that is covered by the plate fee?
Well, we're trying.
What else is it?
Yeah, well, we've got, and of course, the cost of the food paid for the farmers. We have to rent.
But doesn't the plate pay for that? The plate fee, the cost of the ticket?
Well, yeah, part of it, yeah, yeah. What we're, what we're trying to do with the profit is to give a lot of it to mostly the farmer's market here in town. And then we have to keep, you know, a certain amount in the account just to, you know, for expenses and things until the next event. So we can have enough money to, you know, a little extra.
Because it is advertised as a fundraiser for the local farmers. And the whole Farm to Table concept is that it would be a fundraiser event. So obviously, in a fundraiser, you know, the plate cost, if we only broke even with the plate cost, then we wouldn't actually.
So much did you donate last year?
We donated a thousand dollars to the farmer's market. And then, yeah, and then different organizations that help us, like the cheerleaders that are serving, the, uh, let's see, the cheerleaders and people that help washing dishes, you know, things like that. We gave them around a hundred and fifty-two hundred dollars.
How many farmers we had in that county?
That didn't count? But we had a farmer market we were trying to draw.
Yeah, maybe the Rizzi Bragg, and several of the farm people front the actual farmer's market.
So I said something last month about the requests coming in. Todd saw, I said something last month about people's requests coming in, like a month, two months before your event, or a week before your event, or, and I really think we need to adopt different people that, with our budget, how tight our budget is, people need to be the year before your event, before June thirtieth, so it can be in our budget for this year. Now you've asked for a hundred percent increase on the gift from last year, and obviously, that wasn't in the budget. I'm certainly in favor of getting them five hundred in recognition of everything else we do. Because I'm thinking we probably cover ninety percent of the overhead. Beyond your plate fees. With public works, if you had to do everything that the town does to bring, to make this thing what it is, I think, it's got to be pretty close to that, so. And there's tenants in town who can private contributions from as well.
Well, I think it's a great event. We can call attention to our community. And I'm inclined to think the town should support.
I think we are supporting it.
I know, but I'm being supportive to level their request.
A thousand dollars.
Okay, do I have any questions?
I move that we give them a thousand dollars this year with the understanding that they're going to let us have this well in advance next year, so we can budget accordingly.
And, yeah.
Okay, got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now the hearing discussion active.
I think it would be wise to come to the council with a budget. And since it's historical, show us what you've been doing on it, so that we can be responsible to our constituents about the donations, what you just did for, and whether we want it, so.
Well, it's, you know, the event is only in its second year, so it's not a margin thing for us. So I can definitely take that back to the committee. That's too much.
He said he had to keep so much money in there, so they got booked.
Yeah, that's, but what he's saying is if it's on QuickBooks or whatever, you can come and say, boom, this is what our revenue was, this is what our expenses were, this is what our donations were, this is what we have left.
Right. Well, we're very transparent. That's what we're, you know, definitely.
Well, we knew you were transparent, but we require, we require everybody to bring us, not be in the quick meeting, before we get the money.
Anybody? Is there any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Only a thousand dollars to Farm to Table. Do I hear a, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Proves, met?
No, that's not.
Well, you said words in my.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you all.
Josh, is anybody signed up?
No.
Okay, we're going to. Okay, next on agenda is approval of events. Do I hear a motion to adopt the work session in council meeting for June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen?
So moved.
You have a second. Do you have any additions, corrections to those minutes? Not called for vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next on agenda is the financial report. Will again?
Thank you for the question.
Okay, so we have now closed out our year-end. We actually had auditors here today. Just kind of going to give you a little report on that. They say that everything is looking good so far. Everything that they looked at, they're pleased with. We actually went over a lot of the audit comments for last year, and he's going to mark several of them off. Said that we'd improved on that, so I thought you guys might like to know that. Have you all got any questions on where we closed out at the year-end?
You'll be making adjustments after they approve this.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody will call for a motion?
I'll make a motion and we accept it.
You have a second?
Second.
Any other questions for the end? Does not call for a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is the town manager's update on.
I have no comment.
Okay, we'll move on to the committee updates. Planning Commission, Constable Murray.
Council, the planning commission met last night. We discussed several things. Some more naming of streets, park boundary adjustments, and home occupation permits. And then we went on.
Okay. Mrs. Hurst. Mrs. Hurst.
Mrs. Hurst.
Charity.
Oh, yes.
Charity, yeah.
Yeah.
Is she still be residing in Tassau or not?
No, it's a big, big effort.
So she being on the planning commission, she has to be a resident of the town Tassau.
Yeah, you've got a charity, you have, she had to leave about a little.
Okay.
But she got married, sure, she's not staying in Tassau or in Richland.
I'll find out, get an official letter from her.
Okay.
But she was there last night. She rested back from her honeymoon.
Okay, all right, that's good. I was just saying, I just, I'm kind of, for certain.
Well, we're talking about, one of our members is very ill. One of our members is very ill, which is Jackson, we'd like to remember that.
Yeah. He's hanging there.
Okay, thank you, Jack. I just wanted to push his add, see, I'm a good counsel.
Well, she's got some bad problems.
Okay, next on agenda is the train depot with my favorite ones.
Only information I have on the train depot project is that currently, the train station project is being reviewed by the Civil Rights Division of the Virginia Department of Transportation. That's where it's being stopped for.
Couple months.
Couple months.
That is correct. I actually talked to Barry Race today. I've also talked to Roger Muster, who verified that yesterday. So it is, it's just typical local government way up and wheels are closed.
The bureaucracy is at work. I also wanted to share that the Historical Society is going to be recognizing and remembering an event that we have a photo of from May nineteen hundred. There was a picture taken on Main Street in May, on May twenty-eighth, nineteen hundred, with a crowd standing on the street looking at the eclipse that year. It was quite an event, apparently, and Apple was not right in the middle of it, but we were close. That happens again this year. We're not a hundred percent eclipse. You'll have to go to Nashville, Tennessee, or Columbia, South Carolina, it's best close for the hundred percent. But we're ninety-three percent this year for the Great American Eclipse that's going to occur on August twenty-first. And the Historical Society plans to reenact the nineteen hundred picture. Everybody dressed in two thousand seventeen gar, standing on Main Street looking at the eclipse. And if you want to participate in that, just let the Historical Society members know. Susan or John Reed, if you're ever in that, or any other member, or just show up. It will be advertised. It's probably going to be at ten-thirty in the morning to avoid the school traffic. The school will have started by then. But Todd is going to work with us to close Main Street for fifteen minutes to let everybody get out there, get your picture made, and reenact that eclipse.
It's going to rain then.
The event. And if it rains, we're going to look at the clouds.
Not hot, Jason.
Yeah, it's raining. It's cloudy. You ain't going to see that.
But that's good news.
Okay. Will you move on to the unfinished business, dedication of properties? Mr. Pye.
Yes. Do you have, you're already doing a couple of these. Yeah, they got them in the back. We're on, yeah. There are two separate properties that you all have worked on for quite some time. First being the actual start of Cox Property, what I refer to as the Cox Properties, which located on the south side of Main Street, which is in seven different parcels. And also the property located next to Lincolnshire, which is the former theater. I know we've worked on this for quite a while, to consider having the deed prepared, to have those properties formally transferred to the IEDA. You have, I believe, a mayor, there's a couple of resolutions I think should be read and passed tonight to allow for those transfers to occur from the council to the IEDA, to be reflected by the resolutions that direct from the councils for the mayor, excuse the manager, to be reassigned upon those deeds and transfers, those parcels to the IEDA.
Okay, I will. Be here, okay. This is the Lincolnshire property. Constable Brown introduced in the following resolution, which was read before council on July eleventh, two thousand seventeen. Be resolved by the council of Town Tassau that Town Tassau is the current owner of a certain real property with the improvements that are in described as the former movie theater property located near Lincolnshire in the Town Tassau and identified by tax map parcel number oh nine four eight five A oh 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 five P. Be followed, resolved by the council of Town Tassau that the said council determined by unanimous vote of occurring at the regular meeting on March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, that the marketing and sale of said property and improvements would be most beneficial to the residents of the town. They transfer the Industrial Economic Development Authority to Town Tassau, Virginia. Therefore, be resolved that the council of Town Tassau destines the appointees to town manager with the authority to donate, transfer, and convey the parcels that described here above on behalf of Town Tassau. And further confirms his authority to endorse any deed on behalf of Town Tassau to the IEDA with the purpose of this purpose. His resolution was seconded by, so I hear a motion to adopt this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
I got a question. Once we do this, the IEDA will have complete control of the properties, is that right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
So then what do we do as far as the town goes in working on the project of the movie theater and stuff like that?
Anytime the government body wants to work with an individual that stepped up to the place for the best interest of the community, it has to go through the IEDA and let it be run in hand and paper. So even though it's under the ownership of the IEDA, they're obviously working, you know, for the town council in your direction that you want going. We just, as a government body of Town Tassau, do not have the flexibility to negotiate with individuals. The IEDA, the IEDA does. So for example, the individual that's interested in the movie theater, if we wanted to fist forward, we wanted to handle that, the only way you can do it is run an ad in paper and hope that that individual is the only one that steps up.
Otherwise, it goes to the huck.
Otherwise, it's got to, that's right, that's right. And you can have anybody from around the world come in and be interested in that. However, this type of act, this type of body was set up by legislation many years ago in order to prevent things like that and give localities an opportunity to benefit.
You answered it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We'll call for a roll call vote, and we'll start on that.
Aye. Yes.
A motion carried. We'll move on to the next one. This is the Cox Property. Constable Brown introduced the following resolution, which was read before council on July eleventh, two thousand seventeen. Be resolved by the council of Town Tassau that the Town Tassau is the current owner of certain real property described as seven continuous tractable parcels of land located in the south of, south of side Main Street. The Town Tassau identified that by tax map parcel is number oh nine four B four A oh oh seven eight. And now, we'll now redo all the rest of the tax maps. Be followed, resolved by the council of Town Tassau that said, council determines by unanimous vote of occurring at the regular meeting on March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, that the marketing and sale of said property would most beneficial to the residents of Town Tassau. It transferred to the Industrial Economic Development Authority of the Town Tassau. Therefore, be resolved by the council of Town Tassau, that says, and wants the town manager with the authority to donate and transfer the, the seven parcels that are described here above on behalf of Town Tassau. Further confirms his authority to endorse any deed on behalf of Town Tassau to the IEDA with the purpose of this purpose. Now you're raising to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, the motion be answered. Okay, any other discussion? Again, we'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Please, we'll move on to the rest of the floor.
Okay, several months ago, council, recall, council gave me direction to approach the county and take a figure to them that we calculated to be fifty percent of losses. And actually, if you look at your June thirtieth report that you had in front of you, it was pretty accurate estimate because we're a hundred and six, a hundred, a hundred and six thousand dollars. Six thousand dollars off on that estimate, and that's pretty close. The county's portion would have been fifty percent on average. Some months, it was quite a bit less, some months quite a bit more, but on average, I think fifty percent is pretty conservative, so that would have been fifty thousand dollars. I have a letter that I received actually this week from Arlene. I like to read it for the record. The budget committee included the Town Tassau EMS department and the Town County Fiscal Year eighteen budget documents. The agency approved funding is twenty thousand five hundred dollars. Please request this funding quarterly. At the beginning of each quarter, equal installments of five thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you, and have a good day. I'll be macking. So once again, we received half, right at half, of what we asked them to consider, which was half of loss.
Actually, it turned out it's like twenty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty. They're giving twenty percent, they're twenty percent of the loss. For a hundred thousand dollars, they're giving us twenty grand.
So they were a little, they asked for consideration. Council asked me to go to them, consideration's forty-five to fifty, because we don't know what next year brings. And they were unable to do that, and gave us ha, gave us less than, less than half, which was twenty thousand five hundred dollars. gave us half, gave us less than half, which was $20,500. So the EMS committee met last night.
And we discussed the same. The rescue squad is doing a better job on billing. The Tazewell County has based changes, which will take us off some of the outbound runs that we had to make, like down in Horse Pen, Bishop, and down in that area. So maybe our events will be less there also. But those reveals, we can't reveal, but most of those accounts down there we'll find are usually no insurance at all anyhow. But I was not in favor of renewing the rescue squad. But after going over the figures, looking at it, working with her, and the fact that she has gotten $155,000 grant for another new truck, I think we ought to go and give her another year's chance.
I think...
And I'd like, I'd like to make that a motion.
You got a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, now we begin a private discussion.
So just for clarification, my understanding is that if there's a rescue squad called for Bishop, it's going to come from...
Somebody else.
Somewhere.
Yeah, the county has one of their rescue squads that's going to suffer that area.
Unless they're booked and we go down.
Yeah, we might go down.
I think Cindy came up with a good, I mean, she picked up a whole lot from the past, collecting the money and get the squad.
So some time was the wrong track.
Right. And that's why we'll give another year to see if it gets better, we're fine.
Jack, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I know Cindy's done a great job, and I'm definitely going to go with your recommendation, but I would like to see documentation through the year continue to augment because I also, part of me still feels like, we went to the county and said, listen, our taxpayers are paying 50 percent of the cost for you to take care of your tax base. So either step up or take the whole thing, and they said, no, and they called their bluff and...
Well, we didn't put it to them as a bluff, we...
We said, we said 50 percent, or we're going to go back to you, so...
But I don't think we told them that, did we?
Yes, sir, we did. Yeah, yes, sir. So, I mean, I feel like...
Well, I don't think they called her bluff, I think this is a choice, or a chance of the town keeping what they've got.
I don't disagree with that.
And see if, and I'm going to work closely with her, I'm going to have more time, I hope, and see if we can't get more billing in and more money in, and see if we can't...
We're not, this isn't, this isn't done to make money, this is done to serve institutions. So, but I think that the more accurate record keeping you can keep, so that we can go back to the county again, because I prefer, we all should do it with you, and the county continues to step up. I don't know, there's...
Well, the thing that we know is, if we give it up, the county has to take it.
Right.
And we, as far as it goes, we can say, okay, six months, now we can say this thing is not working.
I prefer that she does it so well, the county realizes they can't do it the way she's doing it, the way she's doing it. So we keep it, but they pay their fair share.
That's what I'm hoping.
You can do that again this year.
What we'll do is that every council back, everyone that you get, she will put enough date to whatever degree you're wanting, she can overload you with information.
I also, I would forward that to the...
We'll do that, we'll forward it to the county, we'll be sure that Lee Anne forwards it to the county every time, I mean, Robins or every time we put together a package.
Let me say this now, and Dr. Brown, you should know it, and you know it, is when we're dealing with these insurance companies and billing it, it's not always the way we want it to be able to come back, so we sometimes might be slammed and lost, but hopefully they will be well made up with the next month, with the money coming out of me.
I get it. I live down there very much.
Well, I disclose our, we disclose our business, the fellas.
A year from now, you'll still be getting checks. A year from now, you'll still be getting checks.
I doubt it.
Any other discussion?
I was elected by the people of Bishop, of Horse Pen, but I consider them a part of the greater Tazewell community, and I would prefer the county step up and let us continue to serve the greater Tazewell community, and not farm them out to somebody on the other end of the county. That's just my opinion, and that's for what it's worth.
Is that, is that rescue squad in Apples Valley or whatever?
Apples Valley, yeah.
There's going to be...
But Bishop is not Apples Valley, it's Tazewell, and if you ask people Bishop that, they're going to take it.
Yeah, I don't know what word is actually located or Apples Valley.
Only... halfway.
Uh, five, five miles.
Fifty yards more miles there.
Holdfield Museum of Park.
Okay. Halfway to Tuck Hones.
Okay, any other discussion? Not called for vote, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. We're gone. New side of discussion.
Okay, as each of you are aware, we have a recycling bin that's fully functional and employed 100 percent of the time in which it is open to somebody there to help you. We haven't had a whole lot of traffic yet, but we just opened it up about two and a half, three weeks ago, and it just hit the newsletter. I'm sure each of y'all got a copy of the newsletter. Newsletter was just a little bit late, you apologize for that. No offense, it was a bad force. One thing I want to question council about, and see what direction you want to go in. The hours of operation right now are obviously more than what's needed, but we're hoping to pick up. Those hours are from 7:00 to 3:30 Tuesday. They're also open Thursday from 7:00 to 3:30, and Saturdays from 7:00 too. And I have no way I can justify those hours right now, because we are not getting the traffic. There's one Saturday we were open, we had one individual. So I'm hoping that as it grows and the work gets out, we have not restricted it, if you're a town resident, or if you have West agenda plates, county plates, whoever wants to bring recycling in, we're allowing them to do so. I've had a question come up a number of times about the dumpsters that are presently terrorizing the public works in Towne-Tazewell around back, as to whether we're moving those, and I just need direction from council. But before, before we do offer any direction, I want to put out a couple of points. I've got employees up there, and I would rather, I would like to keep the atmosphere a happy atmosphere. So if you open it up to town residents, that's what we'll do for garbage, if you want to do it at all. If individuals from the county come up, obviously we can't handle that, and we might as well just leave them back here. Most of our garbage from around back comes from out there, it's a fact. Everything from garbage bags to brush piles. Mr. Prue, I looked out the window a couple of weeks ago, and he had a backhoe set up at the dumpster, and a truck was sat in, a dump truck. He was getting rocks out of the dumpster, landscaping rocks, big rocks, and you know what he was unloading out of there, actually pulled the front wheels on the garbage, so I couldn't move, couldn't lift it. So we get everything from chairs to couches, ninety-nine percent of it is literally from out in the county. So the individual that's at the recycling bin is going to have to face that, all right? He's going to have to say, no, you can't. And they're going to have one bag, and before you know it, the next one, and then the next one, and it's going to grow to a point, okay? It's an obvious fact that I don't want to make it hard on that individual who's working hard time to have to put up with a whole lot of...
So what's your suggestion?
My suggestion, in order to protect that, is to not allow any garbage besides municipal garbage. So what we're doing here, I mean, we go to every door in town, we pick up everybody in town, and I'm telling you, I use that dumpster back there more than anybody. I take my home garbage right back here, it's more convenient, I don't like having piled up in my garage, but I'm going to have to suck it up and do the right thing, if this is what we do, so... But yeah, a lot of people, a lot of people in the community use it, and it's a bit convenient. But with respect to the area we've got, the program that we're trying to create up here, and trying to keep a civil environment without making it too hostile on the part-time employee there, I recommend that you consider leaving it non-garbage, with the exception of municipal use. But it's up to council, we will try anything that you'd like to try in the given world, so whatever happens. I just need clear definitive direction. I can tell you right now that the sign on it is clearly marked, no litter, no bags, or trash at gate, absolutely no garbage.
So what were you, what are you going to do with this if you do that?
Well, municipal garbage, we are taking to the dump. These dumpsters back here will be moved, they will be...
Oh, regardless.
They're going to be hauled out of here, and they will be taken to that recycling bin. But that recycling bin up there will be used for municipal garbage, at the fire station, the rescue squad, any other governmental entity, of course, we've got to hit the same, so we will use, we will use it, just like there were, when we go to every door everywhere around town. I just need direction on council, and anyway you want to go is fine, we'll, we'll make it work, ever what you want to do.
I don't understand the statement that the people who want to recycle, whether they're in town or out of town, or out of state, can bring the recycling stuff up there when it's costing us so much every time they pick those things up.
But we have a, that's a good question, and Mike, you know, Mike Hymn and I discussed that, and right now we get fuel from the county, we use their county tanks, of course they bill us for it, but they don't, they don't charge us for using, you know, the, if I had to put those fuel tanks in, obviously it's spent, so we do trade off with them, they help us, we help them. I'm going to have a hard time justifying the expense on the recycling bins if I don't capitalize on it by opening it up to more people locally, I don't think I can.
The county did not say that, you said I've said it.
Well, I mean, we can, we can...
I don't think we won't be paying for West Virginia's recycling over here.
I understand, and if council, we can keep the Virginia's, I understand direction. What I'm, what I'm looking at doing is trying to justify the expense of recycling bins, and we'll take all we can get from anybody, and one day it might be a return on investment if we get paid for it. Right now, we do not get paid for it. We've bought, we've bought roll-off bins, got a really good deal on roll-off trucks from Leven, thanks to Leven, so we're prepared to maintain and service it, and have a really good program. I'm just concerned about not getting enough attention there to justify all this.
Well, who does get it, if you say?
We take it to what's that?
ANS Sanitation, I hear no recycling bill for it.
Does anybody have seen that?
Oh, right now. They used to years ago, the year, I mean, years ago, ten years ago, they used to pay for recycling cargo and...
But they're, but now they're charging us for dumpsters, is that right?
No, their, these dumpsters belong to us.
I mean, up there?
No, they're ours.
Okay, so they've done empty?
No, we, we don't. I'm just saying they belong to us, the truck belongs to us, the county actually donated two of those containers up there, is that right? They actually donated two of those containers we have up there. So there's no cost to us when we turn them in, other than if you want to get the stuff out. That's right, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, yeah, one time you talked about Lusk was going to do it, and it's going to cost us so much.
Now, if Lusk was dumping, if Lusk was picking them up, absolutely, it would be well beyond...
That's what, one time you said Lusk was going to do so much for them, and I didn't know that we had went to AMS. There's a hundred or some doctors, a dumpster to dump.
Yeah, every time they dump.
Well, we can dump them down, it don't cost nothing but the fuel, man. And the two actual recycling bins are part of the town that donated to us. Well, I have no problem with that, anybody dumping recycling in in that case.
Okay, so we're clear on the recycling, the hours, we'll keep an eye on, how about the garbage? Cancel, okay, was laid in, but anyway, I don't feel any pressure.
I think, I think that you, we ought to do away with these dumpsters back here, and because I go by, go by out here a lot of times, there's people from out of state, and I run them off.
Yeah, we are, once again, going to remove the dumpsters from around back, they are going to be put in the recycling bins.
And just let it be for municipal use?
Municipal use, that's the recommendation, however, either way, if you're not, I'm not going to, either way you want to go.
I'll make that as a recommendation.
I got a feeling it's going to be a lot of trash around town. Well, it's going, it's going to have an issue.
Everybody pays for garbage, okay?
Sure they pay for garbage, there's a lot of people that is coming in and dump trash.
Well, they need to stop, yeah, they need to stop.
I should, but I didn't catch them.
Yeah, but if they don't have the dumpsters fixed, they don't have a...
People see trash back there from the dumpster there. Someone had a dump up there, they'd be picking up.
Well, we got a camera back here.
Yeah, we got cameras by, by here, we, we would get the cameras and pictures, send them cheap there. And there are different routes that you want to go.
Jack, you had a motion.
If it's going to camera back there...
You have a motion?
I may, I may make a motion that we do away with the trash back here, and in our news section, only the municipal trash goes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any other discussion?
I like sitting back here to you, that's my opinion.
Okay, call for vote, all the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay.
You are giving them a day.
Okay.
It's going to be trashy, trashy place.
All right, we'll move on. New business, capitol plan for...
This is just the resolution that you guys approve every year for our pre-tax, for our health insurance. They just need it redone a few years.
That's a capitol plan, Jack.
Okay. I thought we were going to somebody to put the capitol in.
All right, let me read it. All right. On this date, Towne-Tazewell council members did discuss the information of the Towne-Tazewell flexible benefits to be effective July 1, 2017, and they've known that the following resolutions were duly adopted by Towne-Tazewell council members, and such resolutions have been modified to descend as the date herein. Whereas the form of the capitol plan that is authorized under section 125 of the Internal Revenue Act of 1986 presented to the meeting hereby adopted and approved to this, officer of the employee or hereby authorized and directed to execute delivery of the management of one or more copies of the plan, and whereas the plan here shall be for the period beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, whereas the employer shall be contribute to the plan amounts submitted to the immediate obligations under the capitol plan in accordance with the terms of the plan. Document and shall notify the plan of administration to which periods said contribution shall be applied, whereas the proper officer of the employer shall act as soon as possible to notify the employees of the adoption of the capitol plan by delivering to each employee a copy of the summary plan descriptions presented to this meeting for, which hereby approved in no further be of resolve, but I am in favor of the Towne-Tazewell council certifies and attached here exhibits A and B, R2 copies of the plan document and summary.
Motion carried, next is for Post Street, name change.
I know in the past I told you it's probably nice street to remain. Had some kickouts by the tax office and had to reelect some areas, and the free match you have, you got the matting plaza up there, you got the west command of Maple and Hill Street, like first prime commission, part of these three names, the rest of the streets, North Tassau zip code, all the address changed lettered out yesterday morning, except for Market Street.
Bluemont, or Bluemont Lane's meeting, that's.
We'll be, once we fix this, we'll kind of be done.
I'm.
You're on market. This, uh, shot of the plaza behind, Dr. Brown's office and Van Zijde's on the windy side, it's kinda hard to address on River, or Market, it's like he's another street behind him, without having to use Sweetland.
Is Market Street like from my office to Bluemont?
Actually, it's all the four lines.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Well, that's not Riverside Drive.
This stops at the, it's, well, you should connect.
Well, it's two different, I mean, two different outcomes, it's two.
Riverside Drive, it's kind of high to four, where it won't. Where does Riverside Drive stop, Miss Street?
Stops at the red light on your office.
Well, my, my office is that way of the red light.
Your entrance to your, someone moved my entrance over down. Yeah, if you open that up, it's actually actually gonna go back to Riverside.
I just gotta move a few rocks. Why didn't you tell me, you missed a month ago, man?
Why didn't you take it out?
I didn't take it, I was out when I got here. Jerry Wood told me I couldn't, couldn't, couldn't put it back in.
And then.
I found out a hundred of the states in Virginia you couldn't put it back in, you know?
There's no, there's nothing.
So you're recommending.
Good information where we're all three of these last night, and it's recommendations for the street name.
Uh, your motion to adopt these three names, about Lane, Coleman, uh, Lane and, Coleman.
Coleman.
And Parkwood.
So move.
Have a second.
I'll say.
Any other discussion? You're not called for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Dexter and Jenna is, uh, fight on, but all changes fixed July one.
At that time of year again, with the general assembly making changes in both eighteen point two and forty-six point two, the town, of course, needs to adopt those changes in effect with one misdemeanors that affected by our town police for both eighteen point two and forty-six point two, so they can properly do their job without running into problems about what type of warrant or summons that a charge is brought on, so we request at this time every year for the council to, as an emergency manager, to adopt those changes to both those code sectors, to incorporate those into our town code.
Okay, have a motion to that.
I make that motion to adopt the eighteen two.
Second. Any other discussion? Call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, you made it adopted as emergency.
Yes.
You have a motion to adopt it as.
Make a motion.
Effective July one.
I'll say that motion first.
Okay, you have a motion and second, I hear you, this is other discussion. Call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Remove.
Aye.
Remove that, on the general, we can remove it up.
Okay, all right, uh, next on the, is the, we've added the business BPO tax.
You get seven.
It's off.
Off, off.
What are you gonna respond to? What are you gonna respond to?
Next on the unit is the business BPO tax.
Okay, you just made a motion?
Yes, I've had a motion.
I make a motion that we reduce the BPO tax point three to two, point two-three.
Second, sir.
Okay, you have a motion and second, any other discussion? Call for vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Anything else we want for council before we ask where, where should go in the exact session?
Second.
You have a motion, go, go with exact session, if we're personal matters and respect the business, you have a motion and second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.